I'm in the middle of your conference.
No, sorry, this is.
Okay. Welcome to the City of Manistee, October 2nd, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Membertu?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Chair Whitlam?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda, at this time the Planning Commission can take action to approve the October 2nd, 2025 meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Shelley, second.
I'll second.
By Pam, discussion, none, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Membertu?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest, is there any member of the Planning Commission with any type of conflict on tonight's agenda? Please speak up. None, we'll move forward. Approval of minutes, this time the chair can, will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the August 7th, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Marlene, second.
Second.
By Mick, discussion, none, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Membertu?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence has been shared with PC and will not be read aloud tonight. Presentations and speakers, we have none. Public hearing, none. Public comment on agenda-related items, all comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium, we'll go through the chair. Also, there will not be any interaction between the podium and audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the chair can adjourn the meeting, limited to five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience? No? Okay. New business, Gateway Redevelopment Project, special use extension request. Is there a representative?
We have a lot of representatives.
Okay, good. We like a lot.
Good evening, I'm PF Taxiadis. With me tonight are two individuals who are involved with the Gateway project. Dave Rotundo, he's Vice President with Little River Holdings, in charge of construction and development, and he will be the project manager, project coordinator for the Gateway project. I will be assisting him with some aspects of the project and provide some history and background. Also here tonight is Doug Mikoff with West Wing Construction. West Wing is the construction manager for the Gateway project, and he will be coordinating and managing the construction when it starts. As I discussed with you back in July, there were few changes to the design, or the conceptual design of the Gateway project, the first phase, which is the group of buildings on the south side of River Street, the two mixed-use buildings, east-west, the townhouses along River Street, and the parking deck between the three groups of buildings. The few changes that were made in the last year or so are all within what was allowed by the conditions of the PUD, and so at this point, Little River Holdings requesting an extension of the PUD. The project will be, will take approximately four and a half to five years to complete, with the first phase, the south side of River Street, being first, approximately 18 to 24 months of construction, and followed by the, by construction of the condominium hotel complex. So, the request to the Planning Commission tonight is to extend the planned unit development permit.
All right. With that, is there any question from the commission?
With the approval, when do you believe there would be, the work would start?
The, construction is subject to receiving approval by the state, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and EGO, for the Act 381 work plan, which is the document that associated with the brownfield plan that was approved by the city council back in July, and that approval is expected before the end of the year. The second part, the second approval that is required is, actually it's the award of funding for the project by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and that approval process runs concurrently with the approval of the Act 381 work plan, so theoretically it should be, it should be completed before the end of the year. There are some activities that will be starting before that, some environmental work that will be starting prior to that time, but for the construction to start, we'll have to have in place those approvals by the state.
So, do you anticipate spring?
Construction probably in the spring, or some, sometime after all the approvals are in place and financing is in place.
Okay.
So, to get the work, get a lot of the infrastructure done before the, the road diet starts, the reconstruction?
Before what?
Before the road, road reconstruction of US 31?
Actually, coincidentally, today, the group here met, myself met with Jeff, Jeff Mikola from DPW, concerning the sequencing of the construction and the interactions between the, the Little River Holdings group and DOT and DPW. The, the reconstruction, it appears that the reconstruction of US 31 will run concurrently with the construction of the two phases of the Gateway project.
Now, will you have to have all new permits and everything being this, keeps being pushed back, pushed back?
We do not need, well, there would be permits for construction, of course, those have not been applied for yet. The, the PUD essentially is the overall, the umbrella permit, and that's what we need to extend, understanding that the project will take a good four, four and a half, five years.
Any other questions? Pam? Do either, does Dave or Doug have anything?
Dave?
Nothing to add this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, T.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, any other further discussion on this?
No.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the special use permit extension.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
Second.
By Shelley, discussion, none, please take roll. Two years, four, two years. Please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Membertu?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes, thank you. Motion approved. Congratulations. Amend 91 and 99 Arthur Street Development Company, LLC, SUP.
So, as I was reviewing the, or looking for the special use permit for this project for, which started out to be Lakeside Social, turned into Wander Inn, I discovered that some of the conditions that were put in the special use permit came from the original Lakeside Social Plan Review. In short, they downsized the building a bit to, so they didn't have to be put in fire suppression, so occupant load basically dictates fire suppression for assembly uses. They built under 100 occupants, for whatever reason, it stayed in there. So, I went through and just struck out the portions of this special use permit that doesn't necessarily apply to. In addition to the last one there, you see that the phase planning, Phase 2 needs approval. They've, they're gonna have to come back for a new site plan, they're finished with what they're doing now. They did come to me when they started their exterior portion, because I kind of freaked out a little bit and said, "What are you doing? You gotta get approval," and they, we got approval. So, we worked through that, they got what they're doing now done. I guess the original plan was to do this in four or five stages. It, they just finished it up and it looks great and they're very successful, now they have to add on because they're too small. So, they're submitting plans to add some dry storage onto the backside, it's not gonna change their occupancy enough to do anything, it's gonna be a walk-in cooler type thing, but they, they are also looking at some different ideas there for the outside bar, and they'll bring, bring that either as an amendment to the original plan or a separate plan altogether once they figure that out. So, I'd like to get this special use permit actually issued and notarized, which hadn't been done.
Anybody here to represent them? We don't usually go over these if they're not even interested enough to come here.
I, I didn't invite them, I told them that I would take care of it. This is all code stuff that's literally was a finding of mine, I could've just signed off on it and said they're done, but I, for transparency, I want to be correct. I mean, if you certainly wanna talk to them about it, I can, I can invite them to the next meeting, but I honestly told them I would take care of it. They have complied with everything that the city has asked and Planning Commission, and probably a little more, so I would recommend that we amend this so I can issue an actual permit and close it out.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I trust you.
So, with that, I'll ask for a motion to amend the, the special use on the fire suppression, correct, Jerry?
Yes, fire department connection, the shared easement, I have that, I don't know how that, I have that agreement, and that easement was changed, we can leave that in there. I, I must've got crazy with my little lines there, I apologize. Fire protection system is not needed, fire flow calculations, obviously you don't need calculations if you don't need fire suppression. The next one is fire suppression, detailed fire suppression plans. They did provide a hood suppression, which every kitchen needs, but not an overall plan. And then, of course, this all came from the fire department when they thought this building was gonna be a lot larger, so strike all that out, and then the plan phasing, they're done, so I just took that out there to simplify things. Yep, that is it.
Was there a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Shelley, second.
I'll second.
By Marlene, any further discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Membertu?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Chair Whitlam?
Yes. Motion approved. Thank you. Master plan reviews. We gonna be here till 10, 11?
No, or not, hopefully.
Please, no.
So, hi, I'm Tracy Davis with Housing North to go through the master plan. So, everybody should've received a copy well in advance. I have things marked that I know we need to talk about, and I'm thinking that you guys probably do too, so. I could, we could go page by page. And I, so my first thing is like page two, or one. I'm sorry, Shelley, your name's missing, we'll have that corrected, so that was the first thing on my list.
But I don't. Figured Mark did that.
I don't have anything again until page 50, so what, what about you guys?
The only thing, I don't have my copy with me because I kept mine on. What page is the, the demographics for the income?
Demographics start on eight.
Okay. I noticed that it's the 2022 numbers are being used. By the time that we get this printed, can we just adjust those to like whatever the newest ones are, which I think are 2023?
Yes, yes.
They are a bit different.
Okay.
I know it's a pain, but I'd like it to be.
Yes, I agree.
Fresh as possible. Thank you.
Got it. All right?
That's about my only complaint about the whole thing.
Mick, you got anything before I?
No, no. I didn't, I didn't see anything, you know, again, other than the fact of this is a really hard read.
Yeah.
A really hard read, and honestly.
I read it over and over and over.
Yeah, and, and, you know, my, my problem is that it's gotta, it's somehow, we gotta make it more usable so nobody else is, you know, that other pain of death is gonna read this, and that's.
That's kind of rough, so.
If, maybe if there could be some kind of a, a, I don't wanna say, a more user-friendly, simple, under 10-page summary.
Oh, summary, like a definitive summary?
That, yeah, that really just kind of hits the key points without having to go into hydrology and some of the other things that was in the reports. I think that would be helpful, and again, it would be something that other people then could pick up and use as, as a reference.
Yeah, I can, I can ask them about that.
And, and I don't know if that's included, or, you know, I don't wanna cause a.
No, no, I, this is the time that we get to do that and have the input and ask for the things that we wanna ask for, so, yeah, that's not a problem.
It wasn't an intense read, I had to put it down and pick it up, several times and.
Yeah.
Sleep one night going through. It got better toward the end though.
I agree.
It, it's just that first section, which I wasn't, I wish it wasn't the first section because.
Me too.
It will stop a lot of people from looking at it, but I think a summary, for most of the people in town, I think a summary of, especially like for maybe what the plans for later on are for the people in town, I think they would really appreciate that.
And, and kind of just focusing on the goals and objective piece and, and kind of reduce a little bit, or just reference the, the, the master plan and the page numbers in certain.
Some highlights of bullets and then the rest of the document be used as.
Okay.
In the, yeah, the demographics, I mean, there's nothing that Williams and Works can do, but I mean, I found some of these things.
It is what it is.
It is, but, you know, what, what we're gonna be in 2050, and, you know, our population is, we're losing population, we've already lost almost 330 people in 25 years in the city, and other, in the, townships have gained, probably right around there, you know, the property values are good, but just these numbers are scary on, on how Manistee is going to be in the next couple decades, which we want Manistee to flourish, not, not submarine.
And, and it seems, I mean, my, my perspective is, is that Manistee is really kind of going through a renaissance, and it is becoming visible to, to out-of-towners as well as people who live here, so I would hope that there would be some.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Positive outcomes.
This is not everything written in stone, obviously, because I, I am hearing some of the same things, that, you know, this is like a hidden area that people are now seeming to find more so, and it's much more economical than some of our neighbors, so hopefully, you know, some of that's not gonna come to reality.
Not to, I was at the Wander Inn Saturday night, and the amount of people that they had there was just.
I heard it was crazy.
Totally crazy.
I went the next night, yeah.
And then the traffic there just is, so Manistee is picking up tremendously.
Yeah, I agree.
So, did you help them with the pictures?
No, I did not, mm-mm.
Some of them were kind of interesting pictures that they had picked for certain things and.
Well, I mean, if you don't want, if they're specific.
No, I, I was just wondering, just some of the things that they had highlighted versus other things in this community, so just.
I did like having, the majority of them are local pictures, you can definitely tell which ones aren't.
Yeah, I could, yeah.
But no, it was, it was nice to see the local pictures in there.
I agree.
It made it a nice touch.
So, Mark, did you have things before?
No, just, I, no, just with the stats, you know, so we've covered that, and there's nothing that we can do other than trying to build the community up, so.
So, when I went to 50, page 50, golden objectives under housing, my thought was that they've listed specifically the Housing Commission, they've called it out on two, Objective 1 and 2, and I'm, I'm wondering if that's just too narrow, that, yes, we wanna work with Housing Commission, but it sort of felt like.
Yeah.
That was it, so I, I wondered what you thought and wanted to hear.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think there was a little, you know, again, there are so many other, including Housing North and Habitat, Humanity, there are other, other entities, the Little Houses, so I, I think some, somewhere in, in that, if they broaden it to be more inclusive in other organizations focused on improving the housing availability in Manistee County.
Am I misremembering, I thought that we, I thought that that was included when she was reviewing that?
I, I thought so too, but I didn't, actually.
Forgot to, maybe they forgot to change it.
I actually, since you mentioned it, I didn't.
I do have one thing on objectives.
Okay.
On page 50, a couple things. Number one, work with Manistee Housing Commission to incentivize building affordable housing. So, what does that mean?
I know it's rare.
I mean, we can speculate, but I. Well, is, is.
Well, the Housing Commission doesn't, that isn't, their, their focus is in a certain genre.
Right. So, does that mean low-income housing?
That's how I would take it.
If so, me personally, community doesn't need any more of that, we need affordable housing for single-family homes.
Well, that's, I, I thought it just was oddly referenced there, so that was my comment also, that it just needs to be housing.
Expanded to.
Yes, not.
All of the opportunities for housing improvements.
Not just Housing Commission, because I thought that made it really narrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Low income, yeah.
And then number three on here, amend zoning ordinance to allow additional houses, housing options in the city such as accessory buildings, live-work units, townhouses, tiny homes, and similar units that complement the city's character, which, you know, we have been working on going down that road. So, I mean, yes, keep it in, but that's a reminder to keep kicking us a little, so.
The, number four, I kind of questioned, incentivizes the development of housing reserved for those earning 80% of the AMI, using tools such as brownfield tax, increment financing, and I thought, and other incentives, because there are other housing tools and incentives that.
And that would also go from 80 to 120.
Yeah.
Well, and now that you say that, is it, is it typical that very specific language like that is used, or would it make more sense to use more broad language to kind of cast a wider net over, just like you said, the development of housing doesn't need to be specifically those earning 80% of, because that's very limiting.
I think the thought process, I do see people calling out areas where they wanna focus on. So, that's like that workforce housing, missing middle section, if it goes up to that 120, which I would say up to the 120, so if that's not what you see as a vision, and you wanna just keep it broader, then, I mean, we can do that, but.
Well, I think the people out of the 120 don't, aren't really as concerned with a tax incentive for a brownfield as the people who are, because if you're in that, if you're in that 80 to 120%, you literally can't borrow enough money to, to buy a home.
Right.
It's.
Well, and, and if we just, tools such as the brownfield tip, I mean, the other tools that there, there are abatements for the individual homeowners, but it says such as, so it could refer to.
Yeah, maybe expanded.
Okay, all right. Anything else? So, I did, under page 51, Community Economic Development, goal number one, I had a question. Oh, no.
What page is that?
Number five.
What, okay.
Page 51.
Okay.
Objective number five, where it says, consider expanding the DDA to include the Manistee Peninsula or Brownfield redevelopment area, or Brownfield redevelopment area, that was my question.
Yeah, and I would not include that. That, that is a political issue that we, unless it, if, there's, there's a whole lot of ramifications, because the city loses that tax base then, just FYI.
Well, the peninsula is.
It's not in the, it's not in the DDA.
It's not.
No, it is not. The DDA stops at the corner.
Oh, okay.
So, it, now you're talking about.
Which corner, 31 and River, or further?
31.
Okay, I thought it, I thought.
I thought it, I thought it did too, I thought it expanded.
If it goes, it only goes up, it does not go past Hancock for sure, it might go up to Hancock, but it does not go beyond Hancock.
Well, there's no commercial development past Hancock.
Well, but, but that's, that's. Well, but, but that's, that's where Bridget bought the Hancock land, that's where there were other developers and developments in, in the works.
I just, I didn't know what the Brownfield redevelopment area was.
I don't either.
Well.
The Man, the peninsula or a Brownfield redevelopment area.
Well, there are, there are others in other areas of town that aren't in the DDA as well.
I just, I thought that was odd that how, how would we?
I would just keep the DDA out of anything, just because it's Brownfield does not mean that it's part of the D.
Right, that's what I, that was my point.
And that's, yes.
The peninsula, I thought, was fine if we wanted to consider extending that.
That wouldn't be our call, and I, I would.
I think that came from the community engagement.
Yeah, I think it did too.
Meetings that were held with all, all parties. That's where these objectives came from.
Just my opinion, that you're, you're talking about tax revenues that will be, that potentially could be diverted from the city, and without any economic impact statements and, and all that behind us, I wouldn't be comfortable supporting it.
I will put that out for further discussion.
With Mr. Gamble.
Yes, yes.
I would think.
That's who I was referring to.
He's the one, that and, and finance and accounting and treasurer.
Okay.
Oh, Tracy, I do have one other one.
Okay.
In housing.
All right.
On goal two.
All right.
Our number six, review zoning that allows first floor residential uses separated from commercial use. Won't go on, but probably have in the rear of the building, because it looks like it's, it's in the DDA, I would assume.
In here, where, where do you, in the re.
It, I just added in the rear of the building.
Okay.
Just like the gateway project, like commercial on the, on the ground level and residential on the backside.
Yeah, I, that was my understanding of what it should be, would be.
Right.
But I think we have to say it.
Yeah, and, and I believe that when, that wasn't that long ago that we approved that for the DDA area.
Yes.
So there should be some verbiage probably that we can mirror.
Okay.
It's already in the zoning right now that way. Got to have 40% to the front.
Front, yep.
Yeah, I knew.
Commercial unless it's approved as special use to be otherwise.
So I would, yeah, just mirror the verbiage that we have.
Oh, funny thing, Mark, I had that also as a question. So, okay.
Yeah, it, it does look like the DDA stops at 31. I was just looking at it.
Okay.
So for me, I didn't have anything again, I think until page.
64?
61, unless you guys had something.
The only thing I had was on page 53, and it's just a side note for me, railroad map, once we get, get the tracks relocated, that would be just a massive win for Manistee.
Oh, yeah.
53. You said 61, Tracy?
Yeah, oh, here it is. It's page 61, goal six, it's just objective number two. It listed the CBB still, and I think we need to change it to the new name. I think it's the Tourism Authority.
Yep.
That was, that was it for me there.
While we're on that page?
Sure, yeah.
I thought, goal seven, I'm sorry.
Goal seven.
That's just all three of them, evaluate and improve gaps. I'm sorry.
What, what would you like or not like to have happen?
I don't even know where to go with it. It's just, it's just so generic.
You're looking for something more specific that there?
Or either more specific or just don't put it in there at all, because yeah, obviously people want to improve the gaps, but how could we go about doing that?
I mean, you could put it, I mean, if you wanted to use it, you could put it all into one rather than three bullet points.
Yeah, just put, just, just, you know, for youth, adults, and those.
Oh, yeah.
Just maybe one.
We're not paying them for words, are we?
No.
No, it's just so redundant though, because it's kind of like, oh my gosh.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay.
There you go, I like that.
Okay, so my next, anything on existing and future land use? I have something way on page 86, but anything before that?
86?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, just on page 74, high density residential, first paragraph, again, it goes back into the railroad track relocation. You want to put housing on Manistee Lake, that's a perfect spot for it, along with retail. So, I mean, that's just me, so moving along.
That's, that area is mentioned later on too.
Yeah, there was a, there was a park in there.
Oh, yes, I do have something.
Okay.
Page 76, manufactured home residential.
Yes.
Picture that we have in here is all of towable units.
Is what?
Towable units, they have the hitches on them already.
Okay, you want a different picture?
I, well, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I want it.
These are, these are, yeah, this is a trailer park, and that's not what we were, that wasn't the intent.
No.
So with this, manufactured homes provide affordable place to live for the community members, yes. But with this, have them with crawl spaces below grade or.
Hang on, hang on. I'm sorry.
On foundation.
Foundation, on foundation.
They've got to be a fixed foundation.
And I wouldn't say, I'd just say on found, on a found, foundation, on permanent foundation.
Yeah, and there's that whole neighborhood that's on the other side of the lake that looks.
So on foundations, what, what were the other things that you said?
Well, Nick had, just to simplify it, I got too worried, so.
Oh, just on foundation?
Just, yeah, on a permanent foundation.
On permanent foundations.
I think these like those, I call them trailers, they say, no, they're manufactured.
Okay, that's, that's.
They're really, though.
Okay.
And move on to 86.
86, unless somebody has.
Okay.
The light industrial area. I'm just trying to find where it is on my stuff. Okay, so I just wanted to have this discussion, because Bill wanted me to share about light industrial. So I, I think you guys were all, or most of you were at the community engagement meetings where we did the mapping, and we talked about the industrial park area, and potentially in the future, maybe it being something other than industrial park. So Bill's comment really was that under, or he was concerned that that wasn't addressed anywhere in the industrial park area in the northern, on the north side, so.
That it might not stay industrial or?
That it would stay industrial.
He wants it to stay industrial.
He, no, he doesn't.
He doesn't, okay.
He sees the opportunity.
Correct.
I understand, I'm just trying to be sure.
So when talking with Tanya about that issue, she suggested to cover the point Bill was trying to make, that maybe in the sections where it talked about light industrial, that, she said all light industrial land in the northern part of the city become residential, or some light industrial land in the northern part of the city become residential.
I would put that as, because you already, and, and just, this is picking now, but since we brought it up, the picture for light industrial is.
Heavy industrial, yeah.
It is, that is a full blown factory that's been here since the dawn of time, so.
Light industrial would be a warehouse.
Well, light indu, yeah, it would be more like what you're already seeing there.
Like Dr. Schrank.
So they, yeah, this would be the appropriate for general industrial or heavy.
Heavy industrial, yeah.
And then the other point she said to address Bill's concern was that you could, and maybe it's in that same sentence, vacant land near or in the light industrial park area could become residential.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, that makes perfect sense.
That's going to be a chicken or the egg thing, though. Who builds first?
I mean.
Depends on the price of the land, right?
Yes. There, there is talk about that land on Monroe Street there, and what could be if the well has ceased. So, I mean, I, I've talked to some developers, and there is some interest in that. Okay, so that addresses that. Let me see, where else am I going to next? So I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw the additions of the information that Andrew gave me from the last time I was here about the downtown and the DDA. So she summarized that and put it in that section. The, I only had one other thing. What about, what about you guys?
I stopped taking notes because I said, I kept it on my computer and I, the note taking just.
Yeah, I, I had to at some point print it, and my printer died and.
Yeah.
On number, page 92, I know we talked, and I shared with her the idea about the nonconforming lots. So I, I wondered if we wanted to call it out under zoning ordinance revisions, just to address nonconforming lots. I see that she didn't really say anything about that within the documents.
Do you have suggested language?
My language was just to address nonconforming lots, leave it.
Yeah, I think we have, we have, Mr. Blue was working on that language, I think, from the last time, so.
Yeah, I punted it into the new office. I am working on some language. I've got a couple of examples.
And go through the ordinance as well, right?
Yes, yeah.
The city concept would go through as the ordinance as well as.
Yep.
But I just thought because it was a, a very robust conversation here, that it might be something we just wanted to call out.
Absolutely, otherwise we're going to create a lot of challenges for half of the homeowners.
So many of them too.
So I was going to add a number nine to address nonconforming lots, if that's acceptable.
End uses.
Nonconforming lots. End uses. Okay. What else? That's, that was my.
Moving along, the community engagement, just on some of the, what we'll do improve on page three.
Page three?
Yes. You know, one comment was less deer, which we.
Less what?
Less deer.
Less deer.
We talk about.
Too much poop and ticks. I wholeheartedly agree, and hopefully we can do something about that.
Well, under the community engagement, I, I didn't think that that was, I mean, that's just.
Yeah, just comments.
Port of, yeah, what?
But you know, somebody said jet ski rentals, which the Wanderin will have, you know, so that's good. They'll have more donut boats and things like that, so. You know, just, just some of my comments. I don't have. I don't see any other of notes. I'm getting there, I promise.
That's great.
Page 35. Looks like Q16, section 216, page 35.
Backwards?
Pardon?
What page?
Page 35 in the.
Community engagement?
Community engagement, yes. And, and again, this is, this is what, I think, all this came from Teresa?
Yes.
I mean.
And, and their notes from.
Just, you know, what is your age group? We had a huge 55 to 64, 25% and 65 plus at 26.32%. That, you know, that's pretty big, and you have four other age groups that maybe equal one. So we need more, more involvement, and that's from everyone in the under 18 to 45 to 54.
It's because they didn't show up over those.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's who she, not to, and that's who answered.
Yeah, this, this is who came, or either came or answered.
Not this year, yeah.
Or a pop of events commented.
And then.
Yeah, because they didn't get it on a text message. Had they gotten it on text message, probably have more.
Well, maybe, maybe if it was on.
Or Twitter.
Q18, page 36, how many people in the household? Two, 55.8%. That tells you a little bit more about Manistee, that, you know, we're losing that population, in my estimation anyway. So again, there's nothing you can do about it, but it's just a, a stat that I don't like. I don't have anything else. Does anybody else? I think the beach master plan's good.
Yep.
So, good job, Pam.
Okay, so.
Done, so that was good.
I think then what has to happen is they make some of these revisions, and I come back so that you see the revisions, especially since there were some sections that we said summarize and things like that. So any, any other input or comments for me with this?
Any other comments?
Nope.
Nope?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So the executive summary is going to be something we're going to see, talk to them about?
Yeah, I'll, I'll suggest that, that you ask, that the committee asks that, yes.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, let's back into it. Old business, update on 555 First Street, conditional rezone request.
So that request went to city council. City council didn't like the agreement. They tabled the issue based on a couple of the verbiage of a few items that the attorney wrote out. I presented that agreement back to, or I presented those concerns back to the applicant. The applicant then sent me a new request with some verbiage that was consistent with the city council was happy with. We had a draft, we were prepared to take it back to city council, and the applicant stopped us. Their, their attorneys are reviewing the language, and they'll let us know if they're moving. Their, their attorneys are reviewing the language and they'll let us know if they're moving forward. That's where we stand.
Okay.
It was removed from the agenda.
Which one?
Twice.
That's the armory.
Yeah, so.
Oh, for the church group, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it might have been part of, you know, maybe some concerns over the property becoming exempt, tax exempt.
Oh. That was supposed to be a limited.
If they're just renting it though, I don't see how it could be.
It's, yeah. But again.
It's leased.
Well, we'll just switch it around and we'll rent from you. Sell it to you for a dollar and then.
So, well, it's a future.
Yeah, the last I heard is they're going to let me know if it'll be on the next city council meeting, but if not, we'll just wait to hear from them and that's where we're at with it.
Okay.
They didn't give a reason why, they just said the attorney's reviewing the lease. Or the, I'm sorry, not the lease, the agreement.
We did our jobs.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I wanted to make you aware of that and why it hasn't pushed through.
Thank you. Public comments, communication, is there anyone that has anything? Kyle? Tracy? Staff reports, anything?
I think I put a detailed report in your, that's a really good snapshot of the year's permits.
Yep.
Included all categories. I'm still trying to work through how to narrow that down and get you the pertinent information. We will have some vacancies, obviously, on the planning commission, so we're going to be looking for at least one person that I know of now that's not re-upped and can. As far as the planning commission, I'm hoping this will be my last official meeting in this seat. Maybe, maybe not. City did extend an offer to another individual for a different type of position, but they'd be the liaison to the planning commission. We did get an administrative assistant put in place last week, that was good. But she had a pre-planned vacation for this meeting, so she will start training at the next meeting, I, we all hope.
And who will be her assistant?
Uh, the administrative assistant is Jaclyn Van Allen. Val, Jaclyn Van Allen. So she's part-time, she'll be the administrative assistant to the community development department. Community development, if you're looking for us, we've moved again. We've changed office with the assessor. Our assessor offered up taking the spot that Teresa and I was in initially. I had moved over to Teresa's old office so I could be closer to the administrative assistant, to trainer. And then Molly said, you know, you're going to have three people in your department, you might as well have the whole stretch of offices, so. I came in early last week and moved everything again. So if you're looking for us, we got papers over top of our signs. We, I got them marked out. Feel free to ring the bell really loud because I'm way back now, I can't hear nobody. That's it.
If you're just trying to hide, so that's why you put.
It is a very good place to hide, the whole idea.
Laura, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
No, okay. Uh, meetings, trainings, training, excuse me.
You got some pamphlets there?
Yes.
Uh, there's three of you, just get, uh, registered now for the MSU training.
That's, what day is that again? It's like October tenth?
Thirteenth, I think.
Thirteenth, I believe, yep. Um, I believe I shared the registrations with you. If not, I'll re-forward those from.
Yeah, I, I didn't get mine.
You didn't get yours?
Uh-uh. I'll look again, but I didn't get mine.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a note and re-forward those. Shelley, did you get yours?
I have to, I didn't check my email today, but I'm sure.
Okay. It did.
I finally got into it again.
Tried to forward it.
Okay.
Yeah, it went, it was good, so.
Good, thank you.
It was paid for.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, fantastic.
Yep, that's, and then there's some other stuff available there in the pamphlets for you. If you're interested, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Member discussion, Marlene?
Nope, I'm back well. I hope, I'm knock on wood that if nothing else happened to me, keep plugging along and my time is up to be renewed and I sent my application.
Oh, good.
To the city downstairs, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Now we just have to get your email, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you don't get your email?
I don't, I, I had computer at work, but I, I got rid of my computers at home and I, I'm the old gray, slow mail person and he delivers my personal mail to me from here.
I will print out your emails and give them to Mark.
Or.
We'll get a carrier pigeon.
We can put it right on your phone.
Get a tablet.
I feel very special, you know, that I have personal.
Or get a tablet, not one that you write on, but. Well, welcome back.
Yes.
Shelley?
Nothing.
Okay, Pam?
I just have one quick question. What's going on with that house that's not there anymore at the corner of third?
I saw that this morning.
There's just a, they did an extra.
A foundation.
It's just the foundation.
And now you'll start seeing them rebuilding the house?
Oh, but.
They didn't like that one anymore. They wanted to make them bigger.
I wondered if.
Couldn't make it bigger unless they tore that down and used the footprint. So I issued them a zoning permit and a building permit because this is a non-conforming lot.
Well, we have a thing that you couldn't big foot a lot. You had to have so much green space and stuff. But that house on First Street.
First Street?
With the big garage and a big addition.
Seat.
And a cement driveway and there's no green space.
Seat, that's in the seat district. It doesn't need to have a setback or a green space in that district. That's a different animal. Here are districts, we have these small lots, you can't expand more than fifty percent in a non-conforming lot. They wanted to expand bigger and the only way they could do is go on up. They couldn't meet their setbacks if they tore it down, so they left the garage. That little tiny ugly thing will be renovated. I inspected the foundation today. We got to do a little bit of work to get that stabilized a little bit, but they're going to build a nice two-story beautiful home there yet.
I saw the, the big construction sign laying flat. You're going, okay.
Yeah.
Something must be going on.
I saw this one dropping my daughter.
Told them they couldn't put it in till I got an email for a sign.
Okay, I was just curious. It was just, it went down very quickly.
Uh, we did get two more brand-new home permits. If you've seen that on there on First Street, that will wrap those two last.
Oh, yes.
What is going in there?
Two new, two final homes for that PUD down there.
And I'm very envious of the landscaping. It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Anything else, Pam? Nick?
Nothing for me.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. Uh, last month, the fire department had their Ritz Beer Social. And I want to thank everyone on the planning commission. We donated two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Last year we had, we did a hundred and forty, so Chief Tom was appreciative of that.
The city council metered match.
City council did not, they, they gave some, I can't remember what they did. I think it was like a hundred and thirty or something like that, but, you know, it will be. And then War Hardware Complex.
Sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I thought I turned it off.
I'm like, what?
War, War Hardware Complex is now under contract.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And we don't want the land put in there?
Not yet.
Maybe not that he can say.
Yeah, I was sworn to secrecy. Not that I would, no, I, I don't know, so.
Well, you're supposed to know those things.
I know, I'm a nosy-nelly. Uh, that's all I have. Um, I want to thank Jerry and Laura.
Thank you.
Tracy, Kyle, staying, and I would take a motion to adjourn it to six twenty-nine.
I'll make that motion.